Could all stand for the invocation Pastor Raul from the Mercy Springs Church in Nazarene. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Father, I pray that as we gather today to do the business of community, that you would guide every single person here. That you would create within each one of us a true sense of community, a sense of love for one's neighbor. And through the leadership, Father, through the imaginations that you place within them, through all the tasks that are in front of them, Father, you would allow them to just create an environment of hope for the community of Los Banos. That they would seek to find new ways, new creative ways, Father, to become closer as neighbors, to fulfill every potential that we have, to become blessings to each other, Lord, and to find true joy and true peace in community. So be with this in this time, Lord. I pray that you would give them wisdom for their decisions, that you'd give them discernment, that you would give them a heart of peace, a heart of camaraderie, Lord, and that you would protect us all from from the evils of division, dissension, of pride. And that above all, Father, that everything that we do would be to your glory. We pray this in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call this meeting to order for March 19th, 2025. If we could have acting please, Chief Melvin, let's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, or a nation, America, with its global diversity and justice.
Actually, before we start roll call, I'm going to report on a closed session. It's conference with legal counsel. We had a closed session at 5:00 PM this afternoon. It's anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Code 5495-6.9B, one or more potential case. Under this issue, we gave direction to staff and counsel, and so there'll be more to come in the future on that. So now if we could have roll call, please.
Sanders.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Amabile.
Here. Consideration of approval of the agenda. It's recommended to adopt the agenda as submitted.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to make the recommendation, but with the exception of removing item 11 and rescheduling it for the second meeting in April on the 16th.
Okay. Okay, were any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
This is approval of the agenda.
On the regular agenda, excuse me.
That was my motion.
Okay, and a second on that?
Yep, a second.
Okay, we have a motion as second as stated. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And we will move this item to our second meeting in April. Just a lot of pages to review, a lot of companies to review before we go on with that. Now we, let's see. Okay, so now we have a presentation. Thank you very much for being with us this evening. Appreciate it. Appreciate your work with the Red Cross. It's so important for our community, all the communities around us, and it's my honor to give you this proclamation this evening. It's proclamation recognizing Red Cross Month. Whereas during the American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Merced County and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanity legacy of our American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in the country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. And whereas the contributions of the local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in our darkest hours. Last year in Merced County, volunteers helped 82 households affected by home fires, addressing their urgent needs like food and lodging, as well as providing recovery support. In addition, they installed 379 smoke alarms, collected 910 blood donations, provided first aid and CPR training to 2,129 residents, and assisted 25 families of our armed forces. And whereas we recognize the month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the City of Los Banos do hereby recognize the month of March 2025 as Red Cross Month in the City of Los Banos and urge all citizens to reach out and support the Red Cross. Congratulations.
Thank you to the City of Los Banos. Thank you, Mayor, city council members, and everyone here. Our wonderful fire chief, Chief Toala, chief interim police chief, hope maybe he'll be a chief soon, hopefully. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone because we're working really hard to build our capacity up here in Los Banos. It's really important to make sure the West Side is taken care of and Phil's included. We just positioned a specialty response vehicle out here in Los Banos, so we're super excited. And we are building our team out here. We have our team, one of our team leads here, Frank Rivera, and then also Nelly Jimenez. Frank is in charge of our specialty vehicle and trailer and some logistics. And then Nelly is assisting with smoke alarm installations, and she's part of the disaster action team that responds to home fires, which do happen. So you always wonder what happens to those families after that fire occurs. Fire department shows up and puts out that fire. Well, the Red Cross gets called and we go out and make sure they have somewhere to go for the night and few nights. We follow up if they need medication. Do they need any kind of durable medical equipment, spiritual care, or even mental health services? So Red Cross does a lot of amazing things, and I would encourage you, if you're interested in volunteering, please reach out. A lot of these people here have my contact information, or you can go to redcross.org and look up volunteer opportunities. I'm sure we'll have an opportunity for you, including for deployment. There's a lot of great things that we hope to make happen out here. So thank you very much.
Thank you again, very much. Okay, now we'll turn to our public forum. Members of the public may address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of this city. This includes agenda, not agenda items. Can't take any action on any items that's not on the agenda. We limit you to five minutes, and please come forward. You're welcome to speak.
Good evening, Mayor. Welcome back. And counsel, along with the staff. My name is Blanche George, and I live in the downtown area. I wanted to go ahead and mention that we would like to thank you and the council for accepting the grant that the Elks, the Los Banos Elks Lodge was able to obtain. Along with that grant, you will hear soon enough about another grant that we had accomplished, and that was to assist King's View with a full kitchen, commercial freezer, everything, pots and pans, dishes, to assist them, and that was a $6,000 grant. In the past, we've been able to assist in lots of different grants for our community. We are now way over $1,252,000 in grants that we have been, that we have given to our population. So if you haven't, if you have heard that there's a need, please contact the Los Banos Elks Lodge office. You could look up elks.org and take a look at some of the things that we can apply for, for our community here. Just in brief, we have been getting, in the past, we've gotten dictionaries, year after year after year, for third graders, and I'm pretty sure there was a lot of third graders here that was a benefit of dictionaries. We've provided school supplies for fourth graders. We provided also grants for food pantries. We also did this one sweet project where we, we got for the police department canine little German Shepherds that were comfort dogs so that they could hand to children during serious situations. We also duplicated that for the fire department. Ever since Merced County has had a stand down, we have actually had truly supported the stand down by supplying all those veterans in that stand down with boots and socks and things for themselves. We have also provided for veterans, of course, their, anything comfort wise that they needed. For the fire department, we had heard that there was a need, and our very own DJ and Rachel worked together for a grant to supply the CPR dummies, two of them. Of course, there was a child one, and of course, then there was also a dog one that, that was provided for them so we could all learn how to do CPR in lots of different bodies. So as we continue during COVID, we supplied again a lot of food out there. We didn't stop and rest. We continued to do our projects that needed for the community. We also then also supplied King's View again with people with disabilities. They weren't able to go into the facility, so we provided laptops as well as their covers for all the young adults that were part of King's View. So again, we did also received, applied and received a grant very early on for the homeless. We didn't shy away from the fact that it was critical. They had, the home, project Home Key had ended. It was cold, it was sudden, and we needed to help with that, and we completed that project. So we continued doing everything. We continue with the shelter. So if you have a need, if you, one of your individuals asks you, we need this, please contact the Elks Lodge, the office number, you guys can just look up. And thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? Please state your name. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council and city staff. My name's Alu Sabios. I'm the government and community affairs manager for Golden Valley Health Centers. And I just wanted to formally invite you guys to our Los Banos Town Hall, happening Tuesday, March 25th at 5:30 PM at the Los Banos Community Center. The goal of this event is to hear directly from our patients and the Los Banos community about how we can better serve them. The event is completely free and open to everyone. We'll have free food, community resources, and information about the services we provide at Golden Valley Health Centers. Attendees will also have the opportunity to ask questions directly to our leadership team and, including our CEO. Spanish translation will also be available to those who need it. And for those who may not be familiar with Golden Valley Health Centers, we provide healthcare services to more than 162,000 patients a year. We span throughout San Joaquin County, Stanislaus, and Merced County, and the majority of our patients rely on Medi-Cal for their health insurance. Here in Los Banos specifically, we operate two clinics, a dental clinic on West I Street and a medical clinic on Texas Avenue. And we serve over 6,000 patients in this community. And next year, we're actually going to be celebrating our 50 years of providing care in Los Banos, which we are very proud of. We hope that this town hall will be a step towards building a stronger connection and a better understanding how we can serve Los Banos. We invite you to join us and meet our team and be part of the conversation. I did email all you guys as well, so you guys have my information if you guys have any questions. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please come forward. Welcome.
Hi, Kami Adler. I just want to say I was extremely happy, surprised when someone told me to look at this meeting's agenda, and there it was, Shaughnessy Village Park. I want to thank the city council, city manager, interim city manager, the department heads, everybody who worked on finally getting a resolution to this. I started calling like three years ago about this. Started coming to council meetings two years ago about this, and I didn't think I'd see anything for another year. So I am really grateful and so happy that you guys have got it resolved and are moving forward on a park. Thank you very much. I do have a comment about the Caltrans putting the roundabout on 152 in Volta. And I understand that it's maybe a done deal, but if there is any room to maybe have them relook at that, I don't think it's a good place for a roundabout between the trucks. With cars, it's, it's difficult enough with cars. I lived on the East Coast. I'm very familiar with roundabouts, and it's difficult enough with, with cars, but with trucks, it's really difficult. And when those tomato trucks are running in the season, it's not going to be an easy maneuvering between them and the amount of cars that are coming out. And then just coming back into town when there's no trucks coming across there and then trying to re-navigate the, you know, the roundabout. So if there's any room at all to maybe have the city, or I mean, city, the state, relook at that roundabout, that would be, I think, in our best interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Actually talking to Caltrans tomorrow about that roundabout. Anyone else? Please come forward. You're welcome to come forward.
Hi.
Hello.
Honorable Mayor and city council members, I am Kelsey DeGuerre, and I serve as an accounting clerk in the finance department of our city. I also serve as a member of our union's Public Works Miscellaneous Employees Contract Negotiations Team. First of all, I express our union's appreciation for recent improvement to the city's contract offer. As you're aware, the former city manager caused financial and emotional harm to our members. While we are still, while we are starting to recover from those impacts, there remains primarily the financial burden our members and families are bearing. Unfortunately, we can, fortunately, we can settle our contract and heal to an adequate, adequate degree if the city accepts our current proposal, which is, which was submitted to the city's team for disclosure in tonight's closed council session. We have been out of contract since June of last year. Together, let's go to the finish line for a new labor contract, which will retain our critical essential line staff to serve our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Hi, welcome back.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Viviana Renteria, and I am the representative for Peninsula Clean Energy here in Los Banos. I am here to just congratulate, actually, first of all, let me start with saying that I am here to introduce, oh my gosh, excuse me, to invite the community for our upcoming ribbon cutting March 28th, Friday, March 28th, at the community center from 12 to 2:00 PM. The entire community is invited to attend. We will have food, dessert, and entertainment. Second, I'd like to just briefly go over one of the topics on the agenda tonight. Would like to continue the collaboration with the city and just highlight some of the benefits of this project. One is that it will, the new system will be, be efficient. This translates to lower energy bills, which is a crucial factor in the cost benefit. Also, the city will obtain financial and environmental benefits of upgraded HVAC systems throughout the city. The city will replace outdated HVAC systems with new efficient units that feature environmental friendly heat pump technology. I would also like to announce that on water bill due dates, I typically table here outside of the community center, I'm sorry, the city hall, I will be at the lobby if anybody has questions or concerns that would like to come and address. And that's typically on water bill due dates, which is the 5th or the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it. The ribbon cuttings for the solar project, that's.
I'm sorry, yes, that's correct. So the, to clarify, the ribbon cutting is for the community center, the solar carport that was installed there at no cost to the city from Peninsula Clean Energy.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please come forward.
Honorable Mayor.
Welcome.
City council members, Mr. Gary Breezy and Mr. Bill Vaughn. I'm here tonight just to take advantage of your public forum. I've got a couple items on here I'd like to go over and just explain and abbreviate. Number one, commendations are out to you on here for putting the city council meetings back on the agenda and going all the way back till, you know, a couple of months and stuff. Appreciate that very much, so I can look on the website and the public can also look on there to see what has happened. I think that's very important. I mentioned that before, and it's kind of lingered, but it looks like you're caught up on that. So congratulations in that regard. My name is Jerry Geisel, representing the Los Banos as a member of the Friends of Los Banos Library and a resident of Los Banos for 44 years. And part of my thing on here, I've got a couple things on here with the Friends of the Library. Number one, we have presented a check for $1,000 to the Merced County Library today to Amy Taylor, who's the head librarian from Merced. And this is going to go towards kids' projects, our children's projects and books. $650 for projects or for things on here that's coming up, and 350 for books. So that went off very good, and you probably see that in the paper on here. Just want to identify that. Two, that kind of toenails right into what we're doing. Our membership drive is going now, and I gave, give Lucy some membership things, which I hope she'll pass out to you if you wish to join the Friends of the Library in supporting our library. And these funds go toward the projects that we have and trying to make sure the library stays live and we, you know, donate whatever we can, time, money, and energy. The other thing, the third thing, is you've probably heard some rumors or gossips or anything else about closure of the branch libraries. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but there's been several articles out on here that I've received where our supervisors have said they've looked into consideration of either closing libraries, which I don't believe is true. We had that in 1990 where the libraries, the county ran out of funds, and the Friends of the Library stepped up and provided help and money and projects on here to help support that. I don't think we're going there, but there is also talk of privatization, meaning that the county or the supervisors might have wished to turn this over to private companies on here, which means it's not a public library, it's a pay-for library. And this goes to all the rural libraries, which probably need libraries for the most part. We've got plenty of people around here that, you know, believe in libraries, support it, and I look at the numbers on here that come in, the new memberships that we receive, the books that are checked out, and the county so far has done a wonderful job on providing books and services here for Los Banos. job on providing books and services here for Los Banos. There are a lot of other things we can do, as far as I'm concerned, on here for the county to support our library, and any other thing that we can do is the Friends on here to help support. So I'm here to say, check to your supervisors, if you hear rumors and stuff on here, please call your supervisor and see what he has to say. I've worked most of the day on here with memos and other people of concerns responding and giving directions on my part on here, what I believe is honest. And as I said, it's, that's why I'm wound up here tonight, is because of this. So please look into it, use your own judgment, not what you just see, because there's many variations as to what can happen. But if we lose part of the library, whether the hours or the funding, we'll be back where we were in 1990, where it could be closures or it could be limited access. Is that what you want for your community? And I'd ask you to look into that, you know, on my behalf or the Friends of the Library's behalf, or the citizens of Los Banos. Do you want to take this away from them? You're part of it. Our first library was here in 1810, Henry Miller. It was where the Bank of America was, had a building upstairs. And I think it was, maybe 1910, excuse me. In 1912, they established their first library at K and 7th Street, which was donated by Henry Miller and a lot of other various residents of this area. In 1965 is when the library on here with current one was built. For 50 years, there have been improvements, but there could be more. We could do more for our citizens on here and our public and our youth. So take that into consideration, and I'll just leave you with those thoughts, because my time is up. Thank you.
And Jerry, 30 years ago, you were instrumental in getting these, these council meetings on your cable.
Yes, sir.
Network. So I want to thank you for 30 years, because you were in charge back then.
Thank you for making us.
And that was a lot of help getting that in 1995.
Right, and thank you on here, like I said, it's nice to see this on here where I can look in. I don't have to be at every council meeting, and you've got some long agendas ahead of you, and if I have to leave, I'm sorry.
We might be right with you.
I can review it at a later date when you show the videos, and I can look at the minutes and stuff on here to see what actually took place, which I feel is very important to communities, to people of this community where they might not be able to attend. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Welcome. Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, and fellow residents, I just want to bring a couple items up if I could. First of is the best projects, the battery, energy storage systems that are popping up all over the state, and there seems to be a mad rush to install these, and a lot of the processes and checks and balances are being overlooked at various levels, and not only in this county but in other counties. And these, there's very real dangers, as we saw with the Moss Landing incident, which reignited. And I think my biggest concern is that even though this, we know of this tragedy that affected not only the environment but people living in and around that area who are still suffering from the effects. The investigation to determine how to mitigate this, how to address it, how to properly staff our first responders, police, fire, and emergency personnel, do they have the proper PPE, because most of them do not? Do they have the proper training to respond to these types of fires? Do we understand the long and short-term effects of these fires and how they ignite? And for the most part, there's no real way to extinguish them other than to let them extinguish themselves, and even then, they can reignite. From what I understand now, it's 10 years that that land cannot be used because of the environmental hazardous factors that affect it. So what I'd ask is that each one of you, in your capacity as elected, advocate for the residents of Los Banos to ensure that the checks and balances, the safety precautions are being adhered to, to ensure that these facilities are not being rushed in order to capitalize on the funding that's available. Because I, as you may or may not know, this is over a $50 billion project, or funded for these projects, and sometimes it's, there's an eagerness to get these monies. And along with the advocating, as mentioned before, advocating for the roundabout on Pacheco and 152, have you spoken with the Area 10 representative from Caltrans, I believe it's Area 10, to let them know that there were two options available, a roundabout or a traffic light? And most of residents, at least the ones that I've spoken with, prefer a stoplight. And same thing with the one scheduled for Mercy Springs. So again, your role, I believe, is to advocate for us, even though it may not be within the city limits, it still affects, specifically with Pacheco, many of our commuters who use that on a daily basis, and will affect their commute time, their quality of life, and their ability to spend time with your family. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. I think Chief Twala, maybe our next city council meeting, you could give an update about your staff and the firemen, what you might be doing in the future about that. Anyone else? Please come forward. No one? Okay, we will close the public forum. I appreciate everybody that spoke tonight. Your council is listening to you, along with staff. Also, if we received any letters to the city council, before this meeting, they will be posted online at our website, losbanos.org. You can read any letters that were sent to us that would refer to being of the public forum. So you're welcome to read those online. And Lucy, was there anything else at the last minute that came in?
No, just that one that we received prior to 3 o'clock. It's posted online, and you have copies.
Okay, so if we get a letter after 3:00 p.m., then we'll read it. If it's before 3:00 p.m., it's posted, just for efficiency in our meetings. Okay, next item is consideration of approval to consent agenda, and Lucy, it's all yours.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 250352 through 250582 in the amount of $1,173,047.86. City council meeting minutes for the adjourned meeting of January 8th, 2025, the regular meeting of January 15th, 2025, the special meeting of February 3rd, 2025, the regular meeting of February 5th, 2025, the adjourned meeting of February 10th, 2025, the regular meeting of February 19th, 2025, and the regular meeting of March 5th, 2025. City Council Resolution Number 6898, amending Division 4 salary schedule, employee classifications relating to changes to sections 4003, Section E, Parks and Recreation, and Section F, Fire and Building. City Council Resolution Number 6899, rejecting the bids for the construction of the 2025 Street Rehabilitation Phase 2 project. City Council Resolution Number 6900, authorizing the interim city manager to enter into an agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy Authority and amend the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget by increasing revenues and expenditures in the facility fund in the amount of $422,711. City Council Resolution Number 6901, amending Resolution Number 6880, calling and giving notice of the holding of a special election to be held by mail on Tuesday, August 26, 2025, to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Councilmember Lambert as required by the provisions of the laws of the State of California relating to general law cities to include provisions specifying how to break a tie, authorizing the Elections Department to conduct the canvas, and confirming that the city will reimburse the county for the costs of conducting the election. City Council Resolution Number 6902, approving final track map number 2015-01, South Point at Regency Park, Phase 11B, and accompanying subdivision agreement for Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6903, approving final track map number 2015-01, South Point at Regency Park, Phase 11C, and accompanying subdivision agreement for Stonefield Home, Inc. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments on our consent agenda from the city council?
Yes, mayor, I'd like to pull items 8D and 8E for discussion.
D and E, okay. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and discuss D and E, and then we could vote accordingly. So first item is City Council Resolution 6899, rejecting the bids of construction, 2025 Street Rehabilitation Phase 2 project, and is that, should I go to?
Yes.
There you go.
And maybe I need some help in understanding this. This is a rehab of these streets in our FY 2025 street program, and there is an excess of $300,000 in the fund. Are we pushing this into the next fiscal year, 2526 budget? And is there a reason why we need to do that? And are we going to roll this money over?
Chuck, you want to answer this, or you want to?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Lewis, members of council, the, we are, the money will be extended to FY 26, as well as the work items are extended to FY 26. It's just felt it was, we only received one bid, we'd like to lump them in and get, you know, we get cost of efficiency from a larger, a larger contract and more bidders, and the money is extendable to the next fiscal year.
So this bid did come in under the $300,000. Was there an issue with that particular company?
No, ma'am. It just, that, just, it wasn't a competitive bid. We only had one. We felt that generally, I'd like a larger contract to go out. It was only, there was a few streets, it was only 300,000. I was, the direction was to go put the, we did have excess money from the pavement contracts for FY 25, and so the, I was directed to put another contract out to use the balance of the money, even though it was, it was a very small amount, in that we only received one bid, the amount's very small. We thought it was more efficient to just hold up, do it during the summer with more bids and a larger contract.
Okay, I'm, I hear what you're saying, but it still doesn't make sense to me. We have a bid, it's under the amount of money. I don't think that, you know, they're going to start, you know, in this rainy season. I think we're probably pretty much out of the rainy season. And to go out and get other bids just to have more than one, if this bidder met the criteria based on what the city asked for, and if they don't have any strikes against them in their record, I don't know why we're not going through with this.
Just, the consideration we have is that if we include this work with the larger amount of work, we'll get, we'll get better, you know, cost per square foot. You know, instead of $300,000 for, for this work, it might be, you know, effectively $270,000, $250,000.
But is there a guarantee that that's going to happen?
I, no guarantee. I believe so, but with a bigger contract, bigger quantities, we'll get better, more competitive bids.
Okay, so, um, so when is the next bid going to go out?
We're, we're.
For larger contracts?
Yeah, we're preparing, and now, I think, in June. We'll go out in June for a ward in July and construction during the summer.
Well, you know, I really, I really don't like to see things done this way. I'd prefer to see a project being completed in the year that we appropriated the money for it. You know, obviously, our city does not do zero-based budgeting, so therefore, the money gets rolled over. But I just have concerns. You know, we have somebody that did what we asked them to do, and now we're rejecting it, and it's under bid. We've rejected bids in the past, but it's because it's, it's been over or there's some other reason why. And I struggle with this when, when we do this. So that's just my opinion. So thank you.
Chuck, when did you go to bid with that?
We, we put the bid out in January.
Okay.
If I may, the, the thought process behind it was, along with Chuck, what Chuck was saying was, in June, when we rebid this, we'll be rebidding out probably in excess of $2 million with this project included. And so we felt it was appropriate to do so because you're, I think you're going to maximize that dollar spent, because you're going to be able to get a larger return from the number of bidders, as well as probably, very likely, a better per square foot cost for that paving project. And so it was just an attempt by staff to try and maximize that dollar spent. And with that Phase 1 of the 2526 year coming up, we thought it was a perfect way of doing that.
Well, January wasn't that long ago. I hope this was, the decision was made after you came on board, but the logic, you know, logically, if this is the case, we probably shouldn't have sent it out for bid and just waited until you wanted to put the whole project together. This doesn't make sense to do this kind of stuff to a company. So I, I mean, I understand wanting to get better money for your dollar, but don't put something out there and then reject it when they've done what you've asked them to do. That, that doesn't settle well with me. So that, that's all I have to say on that project.
The way I understood it, the biggest issue is that there was only one bid. Sometimes that's a worry summon itself, because then you start getting a lot of change orders to bring it up when you only have one bid, because the competition is gone.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. But what, I guess what I'm saying is, knowing that we had other projects that needed to be done in FYI 2526, it would have been more logic to, logistically and logical to put that in the next fiscal year rather than doing this and having a company waste their time to give us a bid and then reject it.
And the next item is City Council Resolution 6900, authorizing interim city manager to enter into an agreement, Peninsula Clean Energy Authority, and amend the fiscal year 2425 budget, increase revenues, expenditures in the facility fund in the amount $422,711. And you want Chuck to take that? You want to, Chuck, you want to talk on that item? Item 8E?
Eight, I'm sorry, which one?
8E.
Yes, um, this was a authorization for, with Peninsula Clean Energy Authority. I'd like Mr. Rivera to.
Yeah, I think I can take it. Chuck, if, councilmember, if you have some questions. But this was a submission of a grant to replace a number of outdated HVAC units within the city's stockpile, if you will, inventory of AC units. And with this award, we're going to be able to replace approximately 20 of those units. The process by which we inventoried and are selecting the units to replace will be those with, that are the oldest units, also in conjunction with those that are being most utilized within the city inventory. So for example, if there is a unit that's out there that's 25 years old, that's in a building that is rarely used, we might not look at that one to replace, but if there's one that's 22 years old, gets much more use, we would replace that one first just because of its, its relative use in relation to our, our staff and community needs. in relation to our, our staff and community needs. We have an inventory already designated, units identified. We'll be working on bids after this, after it's accepted tonight, to maximize those dollars spent. But we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And thank you for that update, especially for our community. I think my, my question is, we're getting a grant of 422,711. The cost, from what I think I see on here in the small print, and correct me if I'm wrong, is 692,000 for the entire project. So the portion that the city is coming up with is approximately 270,000, or close to 270,000. We have coverage, we're, the city is looking at going from gas furnace to heat pumps, which means we're going to be on the electrical grid. And as you know, in the United States, we have three bad grids. They, they're just not going to be able to hold all this electrical stuff that's going on in the United States. So we have coverage at our fire station here at City Hall. I'm hoping we have some at the police department. Do we have coverage there? We have coverage at the police department and the community center as far as backup when the electricity goes out. But for some of the other areas like our public works, which I think we need to have coverage there, we have one that's going to be replaced at the Pacheco Park Miller and Lux Building. I don't know that they have coverage. So if, if the electricity goes out in these areas, we need to figure out how to get coverage to those units in our city so those employees can continue to do business. If it's cold in the winter, hot in the summer, they need to be protected. So it's nice to get this grant. I'm not an all-going-out person for electricity, so I want to...
Aren't you on that?
I am, I am, and, and they know that too. So, you know, I, I want to be in a position, and I think our customers need to be in a position of having a choice. And so for me, if the electricity goes out, at least I can cook and, you know, turn on some electric candles and see what's going on. When you're all-electric, you're stuck unless you have battery backup. So with this being said, I think we need to look into getting coverage for these other areas like Madison Avenue, Miller and Lux, the Pacheco Park Building. I don't know how often that's used. That might be put on the back burner for a while. But those major areas that don't have coverage, if we have an outage, we need to make sure we have coverage if we're going to move to a heat pump. So that's my, that's my take on that, and that's...
Community center, backup generator?
They don't? Oh, okay, well then...
It's wired for that, correctly, correct?
I think Mr. Rivera has been looking into it, so it does have the ability to have a generator added to it, but doesn't presently have a generator.
Okay, so then we have a fourth one.
That's a big one, I think.
That's a big one, yeah. So that, that's my take. I just wanted to bring that out so that the council can start looking at getting coverage for those areas. So now it is the community center as well as Miller Lux and Madison. Those are three that we don't have coverage on.
Okay, any other comments? Then I'll take a motion.
So, yeah, I, I do have a comment, just going back to previously on the bids and stuff. I think it's good that, you know, we're, we're wanting to maximize the tax dollars to make sure that we can get, you know, more done with the money that we have. And I think it's, you know, good that we're going to go out to bid. But I do agree with what Ms. Lewis is saying is that, you know, we're putting the stuff out there, but are we doing the due diligence, the work required to make sure that that's what we want? Because, you know, from the private sector, it costs them a lot of money, whether it's our vendors, whether it's developers or whatever it is. We say, hey, let's do this. We need this from you. They spend the money, they come to us, and then, you know, we end up with a reject, you know, rejection or whatever. And that's not good for them, you know. So, yeah, we got to put more thought into what we're doing just to make sure that we're not doing that and causing more expense to our vendors and everybody that we work with, with the city. So I just had a statement. That was it. No questions.
Okay, we have a motion?
Yep, on the motion to, you know...
Approve the consent agenda as submitted. Any, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Approve consent agenda as submitted to the City Council. Any questions, further questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thank you very much, everyone. Now we'll move on. Next item is a public hearing. And if you, you can challenge the proposed action as described herein to court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at a public meeting described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Our public hearing this evening is to receive public comment and consideration of the general plan. This is the annual progress report for the calendar year 2024 and to consider an exemption from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to state law. And with this, we'll go to our Community and Economic Development Director, Ms. Suzie Els.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as some of you may recall, this is an annual progress report that we are required to provide and hold a public hearing to do so. Government code requires each jurisdiction to prepare and submit an annual progress report on its housing element by April 1st of each year. We're required to contain the following information within that progress report. We have to report out on the status of the housing element and the progress in its implementation, progress in meeting the city's regional housing needs, and any actions taken by the city toward completion of those programs. We're also required to be reviewed and considered by the city's legislative bodies, so that's what we're doing tonight with the public hearing. And subsequently, then, the annual progress report is submitted to the Office of Planning and Research and the Housing and Community Development Department of the State of California, but it does not require their approval. The purpose of this annual progress report is, one, to remain in compliance with the government code and our housing element law. It's to update the City Council and our community on our housing development and implementation of the housing element. It's to ensure eligibility for straight state grant funding. And the proposed annual progress report ensures that the city will remain in compliance for future grant opportunities and state funding. I do want to take a moment to just explain, we're kind of in this limbo period at the moment between the fifth cycle of the housing element and the sixth cycle. The fifth cycle expired last year in 2024. And we, as a region of Merced County and all of the six communities within Merced County, opted to develop a multi-jurisdictional housing element for our sixth cycle as a lot of what is required to be put into the housing element is redundant. It's, it's required by government code. Every city is going to have the same information. And then there's specific components then for each community. And so we opted, at the advice of the state Housing and Community Development Department, to do a multi-jurisdictional housing element. We're on our second review currently on our draft housing element with HCD. And we're hoping that we will get the final blessing. It's, it was actually the review period was sent back to HCD this week. So it's a 60-day review period, and hopefully after that, we will get their blessing, which will mean the item, the draft, will come to the City Council for adoption. And then it'll get certified, then it goes back to HCD for certification. So we technically are outside of the fifth cycle of the housing element, but we are in review with the state on our sixth cycle and with the rest of the entities in Merced County. This is our Regional Housing Needs Allocation, our RENA. And this table shows the progress of what we have done so far. Now, like I said, we're in that limbo period. And because we are already outside of the fifth cycle, we are actually required to jump into the sixth cycle, RENA. And that is what we are required to report on for 2024. But because of that limbo period, the state of California is allowing us to carry over permits from June 30th, 2023, to January 30th, 2024. So we have some rollover. And then we're reporting on last year's permits, which were 2024. We are required to show the various income levels of very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. In 2024, we, so final, finalized 143 building permits. That's that light blue column for you that shows our 2024. And if you take that rollover of 172 from the previous planning period and the 143 that were certified occupied, certified for occupancy in 2024, that gets us a total of 315 total units to date. We have eight years to report on this particular cycle. So this will take us to 2032. And we still have remaining 2,817 units within our RENA, based on income levels. I do want to point out that in the staff report, there were tables that are contained. That's the report that actually gets sent to the state HCD on April 1st. And those tables are protected. It's a, it's a platform that the state uses with protected Excel spreadsheets. So I apologize that what's in your staff report is these crunched-down tables. So I really tried to blow them up. And I know here it's not really doing a good job on the screen, but you do have 11x17s that our city clerk did provide to you. We're really trying to blow that up. This first table here, which is on page 179, is essentially a summary of exactly where we are at in our, in our entire annual progress report. It automatically is populated. So like I said, the, the Excel worksheets are protected, and they're automatically, whatever you put data into any of the tables, it automatically populates within this summary table. So it's essentially locked out. Staff can't change any of the numbers because they're populated by the tables. But this shows, based on the various income levels in the current year that we're reporting on in 2024, that we had at a moderate, we had 16 units. And above moderate, we had 165, which gave us 181 total. And then it breaks down the type, the unit type, whether it was a single-family detached, or maybe it was an accessory dwelling unit, and whether that was permitted, which 181 were permitted, but then 94 were actually completed for certificate of occupancy. All right, this is another table, which I apologize immensely. I know this is extremely difficult to read. It is a part of the report, the annual progress report. And unless you have like a tablet or something where you're really able to zoom in, it's very difficult to read. But this Table A, what it is essentially is all of the building permits that we are able to report on for 2024. So within this table, it, we have to determine the building permits that were issued. That's the yellow columns. And then in the green columns, those are the certificates of occupancy. So not every permit that is issued in 2024 has a certificate of occupancy, right? The building permit could have been issued in December, and obviously, it's not going to be built in a month and would not be ready for certificate of occupancy. So we do not get credit for it in 2024. We only get credit for certificate of occupancy. But the state of California requires us to report on the building permits issued, but for RENA purposes, we don't get that credit until it's certified for occupancy. So this table you would find on page 181 of your staff report. And then Table B is our RENA. And so that table that I, that I presented before we started getting into the scrunched-up tables was just an overview and a more simplified version of this table. And that's because this table is reporting all the way out to 2032 through the full cycle. And that previous table that I had presented to you is the same information. I just took out 25 through 32, as those years have not occurred. So a part of this annual progress report is to report on implementation. And the goals that we are reporting on are actually from the fifth cycle. So within the fifth cycle, Goal 1 is to provide adequate sites for residential development and alternate housing choices at affordable cost for all segments of the city. We were able to do that recently with our adopted general plan update. We were able to provide for more adequate sites within the city's incorporated city limits. Goal 2 is to remove governmental constraints, which we do through the zoning code. And we're updating currently our design standards and our standards and specifications. Goal 3 is to encourage the maintenance improvement and rehabilitation of the city's existing housing stock and encourage the maintenance and upkeep of existing affordable housing. And this goal, what the state encourages is the city to seek community development block grants for rehabilitation, which the city has not been able to participate in several years with the dissolvment of the redevelopment agency. But we are always committed to encouraging maintenance. We recently had a CDBG grant, a community development block grant, with code enforcement that helped us educate our community in our low and moderate income census tract. And we were able to survey all of our housing stock within that census tract to determine what units need help. And we're always looking for grant opportunities where we can provide rehab grants to our residents. I think our battery ran out. Goal 4 is to achieve energy efficiency in housing activities, which the building code, now with its updates in the green code, we are able to do that. At the time that this fifth cycle of the housing element was adopted, it did not have the, the rigorous energy code that is in there now with the adopted building code. So we do follow the adopted California building code standards. And then Goal 5 is to ensure that all residents have access to housing. We, as, as you know, we were awarded the encampment resolution fund for $11.8 million as well as, as an alliance grant for $2.5 million, which is to permanently house our homeless population. So that will help us achieve that goal. Goal 6 is to increase the percentage of homeowners in the city and provide adequate information on all possible housing assistance programs and distribute to homeowners, developers, and other residents. And the city in the past was able to achieve this through first-time homebuyer loans, through, in, in assistance with the redevelopment agency with state grants. And we're hoping to be able to bring those back for our community, especially with our housing division now within the Community and Economic Development Department. Goal 7 is to maintain an adequate percentage of affordable rental units within the city to accommodate all income groups and family types. Again, our permanent supportive housing project for One Tree with the 58 very low-income units will help us achieve this goal. We also are using our permanent local housing allocation funds from the state. That's SB 2 funds with a contract with Rescue Mission for Bridge Homes that provides 20 shelter beds out in the community. And Goal 8 is to encourage new development projects for special needs groups. Now, special needs groups would be for seniors. It could be for farmworker housing. It can be for the homeless and I Know I'm Missing and other protected classes that are out there. But generally, we would be looking for opportunities, program opportunities, where we can provide more housing for those special needs categories. Public comment, public notices were published in the Merced Sunstar... in the Merced Sunstar and the West Side Express. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. And no, no comments have ever received, but we will hold a public hearing and receive any testimony or written comments. So with that, staff is requesting the city council to consider adopting resolution number 6904, adopting the 2024 annual progress report on the housing element. And that concludes my report. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, before we go to city council with any questions, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing to receive public comment and consideration on this topic of our general plan, our housing element. Anyone that would like to speak to this item, this agenda item, please come forward and state your name for the record. And you have three minutes to speak. Welcome.
Three minutes, you've cut it down from five? Okay, I'll talk fast. I only have one question for Stacy. I wasn't able to call. Where are, I know it's been requested, a lot of people are interested in lower price, like condos, townhouses. Where does that fit in this? Is it extremely low, low? I, I don't know. And is there a requirement for it? And how do we squeeze that in to our housing project? That's my only question.
Yeah, she'll answer that after.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this?
Just stand up. Just a couple while you were speaking in the beginning. So what are the consequences if we don't meet the goals? And then I was a little confused and maybe I didn't understand. You said we were working with, within Merced County with other cities and, but we still have individual goals or it's not a combined goal? I mean, how, how can we have individual stats if we're working together?
Thank you. We'll answer that after the hearing. Anyone else? Any questions? Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, we'll go back to staff. Stacy can answer those three questions.
So to answer Mrs. Ballard's questions, a break question on income level and where does, you know, condos, townhomes, that's typically going to be within medium density and usually will fall within the moderate income level or low income level depending on, you know, how those units are marketed. They could potentially be low income if they have a Section 8 voucher and whether the property owner accepts Section 8. If it's going to be a market rate housing, it probably would be at the moderate level. But the state does require, in order to get a lower income level qualification, it has to minimum be 20 unit density, so 20 units per acre to qualify. So our medium density, the cap, the top of it, the range is at 20 units. And generally, we see it either in the middle of the range or down at the lower end of the range, which starts at seven units. So, and then to, thank you, Joe. And then to answer Mrs. Avalar's questions. The first question about the consequences. The consequences would be that the city would not be eligible for any state funding, any state grants. And the state is now, it has not created penalties or consequences, physical consequences yet, but we're anticipating that that will be next on, on the state's agenda. So it is important for us to stay in compliance. One of our grants, the $11.8 million for the encampment resolution fund, is a state fund. And it is important that we continue to make progress on our draft housing element because that could be in jeopardy if we're not showing that we're in this limbo period. It's, the draft is in review with the state. And we're not quite in our housing element compliance, but we're almost there. So we do need to continue to show those goals. And then how does the city fall into the multi-jurisdictional housing element? You know, how does the city fit into that? So each city and the county has its own appendix within the multi-jurisdictional housing element that is specific to our communities. So it has a whole section just of our city's statistics, our city's demographics. We have to provide site inventory, all of those things that are unique to Los Banos. We have a whole section just for us, just as Atwater, Dos Palos, Gustine, Merced, Livingston. They all have their own sections. Los Banos has its own. But the areas that are required that, oh, that all of us, it would be redundant for, for us all to have that information that the, that the state requires, that's all combined into the document. And then each city has its own appendix, its own section, essentially.
So that's the benefit.
Absolutely. It's economy of scales really is what we were able to do. Otherwise, each jurisdiction is paying hundreds of thousands of dollars for a housing element, and we're all doing the same work. And just a small component of it is unique to our community. The bulk, 80%, I would say, is really, it's all state requirement.
Okay, now I'll turn it. Thank you for those questions, and I'll turn it to council. Any questions for staff from the council?
Yes, Mayor, I have one question. Stacy, for my edification, on page 182, in column one for the RHNA allocation by income level, there is deed restricted and non-deed restricted. What does that mean?
So deed restricted would be that there's a land use covenant that requires it to be low income for a certain period of time. An example of that is our One Tree project, right? We do have a land use covenant that's recorded against the property for 55 years. If it's non-deed restricted, that means it's low income. It's probably a Section 8 voucher that doesn't have a deed restriction against it that says it has to be affordable for a certain period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think the deed restriction is really all about if they sell the project and if deed restricted, the restriction falls to the new owners.
Yeah.
Really goes around. Any other questions, council members? Okay, then, before us, appreciate those comments and questions from everyone. And we'll go to city council resolution number 6904, which is adopting the annual report and status of the housing element of the general plan and the progress report in its implementation.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 6904 as read by title.
Oh, second. Okay, we got a motion and a second as stated. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, everyone that asked the questions, and thanks, staff. Item 10, consideration of city council resolution 6905, accepting the grant deed of 2.33 acres located at Shaughnessy Village Phase 1 for Future Park and Storm Basin for public use and authorizing the interim city manager to execute all required documents for this dedication and acceptance. With this, we'll go to our public works director and our city engineer, Burksen.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This condition, the dedication of Shaughnessy Park, was a condition of the original development several years ago. The, this is an offer of dedication. And I'd like to turn over to the interim city manager and parks director for further background.
Go, go ahead, Joe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. So very, very exciting nights, a long time coming. Before I begin the presentation, I really just want to give a heartfelt, you know, thank you for all the patience that the neighbors had. I had residents reach out on Facebook, in person, on email. I'd have people check in regularly with me on email. And I just appreciate the patience that they gave to me in, in working with this project. It's undoubtedly frustrating. I know that our city council also talked to numerous neighbors. So it's just a very exciting night to have progress with this. But of course, the real excitement will come with the park. So I wanted to provide a kind of a review and update in where we're going with the park tonight.
Perfect.
So of course, the project goal is to construct a park. And I'll show you the, the concept in a few slides here. The subdivision, we, we held some public meetings back in October. This was actually of October of 2023 that we held these, these meetings. And then we proceeded with the bidding process. We, we did end up awarding the contract, and that project has been in suspension since February of 2024. So part of this will be lifting that suspension and moving forward the project. So just some site overviews of the location itself. It's within the Shaughnessy Village subdivision, which is just north of the College Greens Park there. And it's off Deansa Way, Columbia Drive, and Haley Street, as well as Spataford Street. The actual address is 1408 Deansa Way. It's about 2.33 acres. And you can kind of see in that third image that there is a, a large basin and just about a, a little over an acre and a half of the park is, is basin space that supports the storm water system in that new subdivision. And the primary park amenities will be in the above space. So here's the design, and I'll show you kind of a zoomed in image at the end of this presentation as well. But you can kind of see here some of the elements that, that helped to complete it as a park. This includes walking paths, picnic areas, playgrounds, as well as quite a few trees. I believe about 75 trees will be planted into this park. And we, through the public comments, two of the biggest things that we did receive comments on were having walk, walking pathways. Remember, this is a park that's completely surrounded by neighbors. It's not in a corner of a neighborhood or anything like that. It's, it's an island within this neighborhood. And so I think having through ways for walking was very important, as well as fencing. Again, this is a park that's surrounded by streets on, on all sides. Having that, that four foot fencing that wraps the playground kind of play, picnic area will help to support users there. Other, other elements were trees that were requested from the public meetings. In addition, I'll mention here as part of the design elements, but one big item that was discussed as part of the playground was to include sensory friendly elements, of which this playground includes several amenities that, that provide that service, including music elements, basically little things that the kids can, can kind of push and knock that make noise, not very loud, but just enough to engage them. Again, I mentioned the four foot high fencing around the playground area, the looping pathways. There's a shaded picnic area, as well as trees and planters space. So again, hopefully we approve tonight's resolution, accepting the grant deed for the 2.33 acres at Shaughnessy Village. Then from there, we'll set up a meeting to get the construction back into mobilization. That construction will take us through the spring and summer here, and we will hopefully do a grand opening in fall of 2025. Really, the, the main elements of this that would involve extended construction would probably be the playground and the shade, that those typically take a little longer to ship and arrive and install. But everything else should come together pretty quickly. We've seen that with Sunrise Ranch that we're in development with right now. And again, I'll leave my email up here for, for a moment. It's parksandrecreation@losbanos.org. That goes to my, directly to my email, as well as all of our full-time staff at the community center. So please email there if you have any questions or would like updates. And again, I'm over at the community center for, for any questions as well throughout this process. I did want to skip to the last slide, which is the, the design itself, kind of a zoomed in image. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank everybody that, that helped get this project going. That includes pretty much everyone I'm sitting with here, as well as the city manager, as well as our city council, the Stonefield team. Just really grateful to see this come forward to council, and we'll be even happier to see it come to fruition. I, I do believe this will be one of our nicest parks in town, and, and I'm, I'm happy to see it move forward. Thank you.
Joe, how about the bid? Do you have to rebid it, or is?
So we can always rebid. There are, per Section 23 of the general provision, it's not required to rebid it, the project suspension.
I'm talking about pricing. You think the pricing?
So the pricing, there is an element of it that the contractor will be, this is, I'm reading from our municipal code. The contract will be allowed an increase in the contract price or an extension of the contract time, or both directly attributable to any such suspension. In this case, of course, they'll get a schedule extension. But also, pricing, we're still working through. It'll probably be a CPI of about 2.7%, which is the San Francisco local CPI index. There's other elements that we're looking at. There is extra erosion along the basin from when this project was awarded. Rebidding it is, is an option. It would prolong the process. It would be a, a full rebid process. We'd have to reject and cancel this contract, as well as, I, I would suspect that costs would go up probably in the 25 to 30% range, but.
We don't want 25 or 30%, so that'll have to be discussion. Questions for staff?
No questions, other than, gosh, just what Joe said, thank you. Gary, thank you. Everybody, thank you. I know I've been bugging you, what's the deal? What's the deal? What's the deal? And thanks to Stonefield as well, everything that they're doing as well on this deal, because we need to get this done. People have been waiting for it for a long time, so let's do what we can to get, get it all built.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone.
I'd like to echo and thank our staff, Gary, for working with the developer to make sure that we got this park and to move forward and give the residents what they paid for. It was a long time coming. I remember a little small pocket park in the area where I lived at. I think we paid almost 10 years for that pocket park before it was developed, and it was a nice item coming. So I know the residents are going to be pleased, and I'm glad that we're able to knock these projects down and, and get them out there and, you know, just get things going in our city. So thank you to the staff, and thank you to the residents in Shaughnessy Village for your patience in seeing this project come forward. And thank you to Mr. Hosteller for working with our staff.
Same, happy to see this council get things done in a hurry. Happy for staff for being ready to go with it.
Well, I know this was one of the very first things we talked about when we got elected and when Deborah came on as mayor pro tem, how important this was, because it hasn't been fair to those residents in that neighborhood. We wanted to see it done. So again, thank you to everybody. It was a lot of work. I know I've had, I don't know, Tiffany, how many meetings on this park? Maybe six or seven. And thank the city council, because they've, they have all been so supportive for this. And thank Stonefield Homes and Greg Hosteller for, for doing what's right. And thanks, Gary, for coming on board and pushing it all through. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Well, Mayor, I'd say we're not done. We're just beginning. That's just the start.
Yeah, more to come.
Yep. All right, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution, let's see where we at? 6905 as read by title.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Resolution 6905 as stated. Any questions or comments? I have one comment. Now we got to work on that Deansa intersection. We're going to get that fixed, too. There's a resolution to that. We've all been working on that. I just wanted to make that clear, that we're not forgetting about that neighborhood. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much. Okay, we will move on. The consideration of selection executive branch firm to assist city council in recruitment of the city's manager. We have decided to move that forward to a future council meeting. We went to the second meeting in April, right? And there's just a lot to go over, a lot of firms. It's a very important decision. Make sure the right people are, the right firm is put before us to find the right person. Item 12, consideration of city council resolution 6906 in support of Senate Bill 466, the Chromium 6 MCL Compliance Safeguard Act. And with this, we'll go to our city attorney, Bill Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, members of the audience. Not quite as exciting as the Shaughnessy Park, but I will try to liven it up. As you know, the, the city is working through a compliance with the new Chromium 6 MCL set forth by the state water board. We have a very limited period of time within which to comply with the new requirement of 10 parts per billion Chromium 6 in our water system. And Senator, our Senator Anna Caballero is authored a bill, SB 466, the Chromium 6 MCL Compliance Safeguard Act. And the purpose of this bill is to provide cities like Los Banos some protection from third-party lawsuits during the compliance period while we're focusing on compliance with the tech- with technical aspects of dealing with the Chromium 6 in our drinking water. So this bill authored by Senator Caballero will be introduced tomorrow, I understand it. And the senator has asked the City of Los Banos to co-sponsor the bill and to support the bill, which would be in the city's best interest to support and sponsor, co-sponsor this bill. And so the resolution before you tonight is to do just that. And I can answer any questions that you might have about it.
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question. This request is for a certain dollar amount through the end of the legislative session for this year, which is in October. If this if this project is taken care of before the end of the legislative year, do we still have to pay the money through that time or just to the time when it's finished?
So the money that you're referring to is in the physical impact portion of the of the staff report. And that's just to bring to your attention that we have a policy advisor through our Nassimian Law Firm that's providing essentially lobbying efforts to see that this bill makes it through and gets passed by by the Senate and the rest of the legislature. And our cost for those services through that period of time are approximately $4,000 per month. So if the bill should not make it out of committee and not go all the way, that fee will be less.
Okay.
And we will readjust, we'll readjust our engagement agreement with the Nassimian Law Firm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we could have a motion for 6906.
Mayor, I motion to adopt Resolution 6906 as read by title.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second for Resolution 6906. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, Bill. Item 13 is advertisement of public notices and there's no items to be be reported tonight. And so we'll turn to our city interim city manager, Gary Breezy.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, first of all, I want to say thanks for Shaughnessy Park. That was really a team effort between the developer and their staff, Stonefield, and all the people that you see to my left, really getting to the nuts and bolts of the agreement and making it happen. So I think my biggest role in that was to just be an irritant. And so I apologize to everyone to my left about that, but thank you very much because we recognize that the community in that neighborhood deserves that park. And so we're really proud to bring that to them. So we also recognize that Deansa intersection is a priority for the council and we are working behind the scenes. We don't have anything to report yet, but we are really trying to make that happen. Just recognize that it's a Caltrans issue in addition to the developer. And so Caltrans is a monolith of of an organization at the state level. Thankfully, we have a great relationship with our District 10 folks. We've already communicated with them. I'm not going to say we have a path forward, but we kind of think we know what direction we're going in, but I don't have anything to report just yet. So and it's likely still going to probably take months because there's a lot of permitting. There's a lot of review processes that we have to go through, but I can promise you that staff is committed to a successful conclusion to that process. So appreciate all that patience there with that Deansa intersections. Second, I'm really proud to announce that next Friday, the 28th, there will be seven police officers for the Los Banos Police Department graduating the Fresno Police Academy. That's a record for the police department. I want to thank all the staff there, the men and women that are the boots on the ground because they've been without those seven bodies for months and they've had to put in overtime and thankless hours for this community. But we're going to reinforce some of those staffing absences here really quick with seven new trainees. It's not guaranteed that they'll pass the FTO program because it's a pretty rigorous program because we want nothing but the best for our community and it comes from police officers and public safety. But really proud to announce that and report that the police department will be graduating seven police officers at the Fresno Police Academy on the 28th. If you've never been to a police academy graduation, you should try and make it. We can get you the flyer for the graduation if you'd like to attend because it's kind of a cool sight to see the the formality of it and the precision of it. It's pretty neat with with law enforcement. It's very paramilitary. So if you get a chance, we'd love to love to give you that directions, how to get there and the timing of it. And last, I know Stacy mentioned it a bunch. I just want to give you an update on the One Tree Housing Project that you approved back at the February 19th meeting. And that is the 58 new permanent housing program, housing units that we're going to have back behind Gilbert Gonzalez and 2151 East Pacheco. It's going to be a great project. But here's kind of the timeline that we have right now. We have to expend at least 50% of that allocation, that almost that over $14 million by June 30th of this year. The state's really pushing us hard to get this money spent because they want to see the communities in the state produce an actual product. And I can promise you that the City of Los Banos is going to do that. You give us free money, we're going to take advantage of it. And so 50% of that allocation has to be expanded expended by July of 2025. And then the other half of it has to be obligated by that time as well. And so the entire 100% has to be either expanded, expended, expanded, expended, expended by the July 1 date or June 30th. And the other half of it has to be obligated, meaning we have to tell the state formally what we're going to do with that funding at that time, which is an important part of the puzzle. So in a few short weeks, staff will be signing a disposition, development and loan agreement with the developer. Following that, preferably in the next 30 days, staff will be bringing the project to the planning commission. You saw a very good description of it when Stacy and Christie brought it up at the 19th. It'll be more of that type of detail with what the housing unit's going to look like, landscaping, all the infrastructure that you're going to see at the planning commission. So if you'd like to attend that meeting, we don't have a date yet, but we're hoping to have it in the next 30 days. After the planning commission, we're expecting a groundbreaking within 90 days. And then beyond that, the developers being very optimistic, saying 18 months, we could have people signing leases. We don't know what the weather is going to be like for the next two years. We don't know what kind of holdups we're going to get with manufacturing and labor and all of those things that are out of our control. So we're going to say two years. We're going to say 24 months, we'll have those people in those facilities. Our goal is certainly to do that much quicker because we also know that G Street is next to the police department is a problem in the community. It's an eyesore. And so staff is also working on that. And we'll be out there again tomorrow doing a cleanup of that community. I think I will be out there with them in the morning because I want to check it out and see what it's like. But at the end of the day, going back to the project, all of the funds have to be expended by June 30th of 2027. And so we have to have a completed project, people living at the facility by June of 2027. And I can assure you that we are moving in that direction and our goal is to 100% meet that goal and have that location, my apologies, fully occupied by June of 2027. And that, Mr. Mayor and council, is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Gary? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to city council members' report and Mayor Pro Tem, Deborah Lewis. Deborah? Oops. Let me get you on there.
Turned it off. Thank you. Well, I was looking up while our acting city manager was giving his report and I'm, we have our airboard meeting tomorrow. So this item is on the agenda for approval. So I'm just going to kind of let the cat out of the bag a little bit. There is 20 $20 million that has been allocated to the airboard for replacement of old vehicles, for newer vehicles, and it could be either a hybrid or electric. And it and that money will be administered by a program called ValleyCAN, which is Valley Clean Air Now. And it's usually when counties have the programs at their, usually we have it here at the fairgrounds where people come through and get a smog check. And if they can't pass smog check, they'll get a voucher to take to a smog place to have some repairs done to hopefully pass smog. But if they can't, there's money available to help them purchase a new vehicle. Surprisingly, at the last one we had here in Los Banos, there was, there were Teslas out there for people. And if they qualified income wise to purchase a Tesla, then they could and have assistance with the money from the airboard. So I'm pretty, I know for sure this is going to be approved. It will probably be the last round of money that the airboard gets for vehicle replacement for a very long time. So I'm just putting it out there for anyone who is looking to replace their vehicle, contact Valley Air and find out if they're still taking applications because I know there were applications left over from the last round of people who did not get to purchase a vehicle because we ran out of money. But there, you just never know. Some people may have dropped out and decide to purchase a vehicle on their own. So anyone who needs a vehicle replacement, contact Valley Air, San Joaquin Valley Control District and see if they can submit an application to help with assistance to purchase a new vehicle. In regards to the Red Cross, what is it?
March.
Thank you. The proclamation that was given last year and a couple of years prior, had the opportunity to work with our fire department to go out and do replacement of smoke detectors in homes of residents here in Los Banos who either had hardwire ones who that no longer worked anymore or just needed to have those detectors in their homes. So it's a lot of fun. The last last year when we did it, our firefighters from Los Banos, as well as the county, did the installation and, you know, we laypeople on the side did the paperwork. The first time we did it, I got to install some of the the smoke detectors. So it was, it was a good experience for me and I'd like to invite anyone in the community when that program comes up again, please participate because it's very rewarding to help other people in our community be able to keep their homes safe. Mayor, just, you know, I just want to, I understand you're going to be speaking to District 10 tomorrow. And I just want to reiterate that when we met with them the first time, they did tell us that the meetings, that one meeting we had with the community, the decision was not final. So I'm, I'm really curious to hear once you report back as to whether or not it's been made final. And everyone that was there, community wise, they were not in favor of the roundabout on Mercy Springs, but they were in favor of the four, four way stop red light. So I'm hoping that, you know, that final decision hasn't been cut and that there is still that opportunity to have a roundabout. The difference was a cost of $1 million. And I think for the safety of our community, for me, that would seem to be more viable to have a four way, a red light at that corner because there are going to be people crossing Mercy Springs and that's a really high traffic area where that roundabout is considered. And then lastly, I know our police department has been waiting for these candidates for a long time. I'm happy. Congratulations Commander and the chief when he returns. I'm going to be attending that graduation and and I've already let the mayor know to and also our Parks and Recreation, Mr. Himes, that I won't be attending the dedication for the solar because I'm going to go and support our police officers as a city council member. So I'm really happy for our department that we're getting these new candidates and I hope they all are able to pass the rigorous education that they're going to get in Los Banos and not wash out because we really need, we need the staff desperately. And that's my report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council District Number One is still vacant till our August 26 election. And so we'll move on to council member Evan Sanders.
I'll keep this short. Really, I want to thank all you guys, all the staff and department heads because I, every meeting I find it amazing. I go through the agenda and come up with questions and read everything and invariably reports always answer my questions. It's just, everybody's always so prepared and really just thank you for that. It really makes us easy. I don't really have much else. You guys have pretty much said all of it. Congratulations to the new officers that are coming in. Joe, you must be the hardest working guy in Los Banos. You're all over the place, all these meetings that you have for the community. Arbor Day, that was a great turnout. I get to watch one of those trees every day in my morning walk. Hopefully I get to see them all grow. But yeah, thank you for everything that you do. Glad that the city manager search is moving forward. I wish we did that this this week, but I understand, yeah, 500 pages of of proposals is an awful lot to get through. So I'll look forward to doing that next month. And Shaughnessy Park, really happy to see that happen. I know that was a community effort with you especially and Mr. Hostettler and and Joe and everybody on staff. So yeah, happy to see it happen.
Great. Thank you very much. Council member Marcus Chavez. Marcus?
Yeah, so a lot of what's been said, also I planned, you know, to attend MCAG as well. And it's in regards to, you're speaking about the 152 and Volta Roundabout and stuff like that. Yeah, like to, I've heard that, you know, that's a done deal, but then I hear it's not a done deal. So I'm going to go check that out and see what we can come back with and see if we can not have that be a roundabout because I think that would be a tremendous mistake. So, you know, congratulations to the cadets. Hopefully they all, or they all graduate, you know, and hopefully I got to see if I'm able to attend that, you know? And that'd be kind of neat. I know we've got the ribbon cutting going on, but I'll see which one I can make. But also I want to extend, you know, congratulations to Chief Reina graduating FBI. That training, that's not easy to do. So that's, I haven't met him yet, but congratulations, Chief Reina.
He's been gone.
Yeah, yeah. Lot's changed since he left. He came back and it's completely different now. But anyways, you know, again, thanks to the entire staff, you know, dealing with the encampment. I know, you know, Gary, you've been working with staff, made a lot of things happen. I've seen you've got the extra dumpsters out there. They've been going out there, the the city works, all the, you know, going through the cleanups and all that stuff. And believe me, they are doing the work, you know, they are hauling out tons of stuff away from there, which also brings me to, you know, people come, I mean, you know, to us, want to complain about what's out there, but then the public's not helping. They're out there dropping mattresses and all kinds of other junk. That's not where it goes. Those dumpsters are not there for the city, you know? So, you know, please, I ask people, please do not do that. Please, you know, take it to where it goes, but don't just dump it there. We got enough work there. We don't need any more of that stuff. And, you know, city manager and maybe, you know, Chuck Rhodes, I know people are complaining about the roads a lot. They're asking about, hey, what's going on with the roads? You know, people need to understand, I think, that 152, 165, that's a state deal. We are, you know, visiting with them on that stuff, but within our city, there's people that are that are complaining about the roads. So there is conversation going on about that. I just wanted people to hear that, you know, we are cognizant of that and we are working on trying to get that addressed as soon as possible. It's just with the weather and stuff like that going on, it makes it rather difficult. You know, Arbor Day, Joe again, hardest working man. I can't make everything you have out there. You got so many things to go to, I can't keep up. But, you know, Arbor Day was a success. There's a lot of people out there, you know? And it's good to see the community come out. It's great to see this stuff that's happening. I think Cameron House next week's got grand opening going on. We've got the ribbon cutting going on. So there's a lot of things going on. And again, you know, thanks to everyone, Stonefield and everybody here. Shaughnessy, great. Deansa, like you said, working on it requires a state and all that stuff, but we're going. So let's keep going. I don't want to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My report, so my understanding over the last couple of MCAG meetings, I have asked about the 165 roundabout and the 152 roundabout at Volta. My understanding is it's not set in stone. It's still under negotiation. Talked with Gary and we're trying to get Caltrans to make a presentation in April here at one of our meetings and tell us, tell us and the community what's going on with that. Again, like I said, tomorrow I have my MCAG meeting in Merced and and I'll be talking to him. Well, it'll be said during the meeting, but I I usually like to talk to them privately before the meeting. I usually get there a half hour early and hit those guys and hear the real story. So they're talking to me, not in the public. And I sometimes want to, I get a different version, a little bit different. What's the real world like? So we're, we're working on that. I also have tomorrow a LAFCO meeting. on that. I also have tomorrow a LAFCO meeting, which we're going to be talking about the Los Banos MSR? Is that what it is? MSR? That's, let's talk about that. Say a few words about that, Stacy.
Mr. Mayor. So MSR, just real briefly, stands for Municipal Service Review, and LAFCO underwent about two years ago, the preparation of a new Municipal Service Review because of our new general plan update. And that's required to ensure that the city does have the capacity for adequate services
Perfect.
For that growth.
So that's another important part of the whole general plan. And tomorrow's my first meeting as a member of LAFCO. I was on it 18 years ago, and so, and I'm really surprised that Bill Nicholson is still the director, 18 years. How old is that guy? Probably as old as I am. So that'll be interesting. So that's about the roundabout. We still have a few openings on commissions. As you see, it's, please come and join us on these commissions. You can really make a difference in your community. We want to hear your opinions, just not the four of us up here, or the five, the future fifth one that's coming. It's really about what you want. We need to hear your voices. Really important. So please look at the commissions. They're all on the losbanos.org website. They're still available. And, you know, I just want to, I know we're talking, I want to just talk a little bit about the sign going up at, at Sixth Street and 152. Back in 2002, if my memory recalls correctly, the council at that time did a complete downtown study, and we designed our downtown, redesigned it. You saw a little bit of the first phase on Sixth Street, and then the north section, the northwest section, I, about half of it was done. And that plan included an archway. And so then we were, and back then, we had an RD, a redevelopment agency that had money to do things like that. And that's how we got a community center and things like that. It was very important. Then the state took that away from all of us. And now we're looking at, hopefully in the future, looking at trying to get an RDA back into our city. And, but I left office, and that part of it was defunded. Don't know why. The rest of the city downtown was, improvements were taken away also. And I never really got a good answer way back when. So I'm glad. I actually want to thank the last council for funding that sign and getting it done. It took 23 years, but we got it done, and I'm glad to see that. I think it's going to be beautiful, and it's, it's going to help the image of our city. That's why it's so important. Our image is perception, and perception is reality. And that's what really makes people look at your city differently, especially when they don't know about your city and they come from out of town. So again, thank you for all that. And we will be moving into closed session. Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency designated Representative interim city manager, Breezy. State Attorney Vaughn, Human Resource Director Melanie. Legal Counsel Tufo. Financial Consultant Kuhn. Employee organizations, the Los Banos Public Employees Union, or Public Works, Local One, AFSCME. The second item is Public Employee Performance Evaluation. Title, City Attorney pursuant to Government Code Section, again, 54957. If any, if any decision is made in closed session, we'll be coming out here and taking a, a public vote on that item. So at this time, we will be going into closed session. If you don't stay with us, thank you very much for being a part of this meeting and viewing us. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're back from closed session. Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549576. We were discussing Los Banos Public Employee Union, Public Works. That item, we gave direction to staff only. And Item B, Public Employee Performance Evaluation. Title, City Attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. We also gave direction to staff, nothing to report on either one of those items. Thank you for joining us. This meeting's adjourned.